School Directors. Prior to this meeting, the Board with Dr. Cindy met for a Board Retreat. The Exeter Township Board of School Directors and the entire Exeter School community would like to send our deepest condolences to the Governor Mifflin School District and their families. We're shaken by the sudden and senseless loss of life and grief with you as you comfort those who are affected by that tragedy. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the free, free, and just as one.
Mr. Feig, can you please take roll call?
Dr. Ann Herring.
Here.
John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Batler.
Here.
Dr. David Hamburger.
Here.
Michael Japina.
Jason Mill.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Julia Safer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine Board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the Board Table by our Solicitor Sharon Montaigne and members of the School District Administration, including Dr. Cindy Rozeski, Substitute Superintendent, Dr. Eric Flam, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. John Harris, Director of Pupil Services, Dr. Christie Haller, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator, as well as our Board Secretary. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors amend the published agenda for tonight's meeting as follows. I need a motion to amend the agenda to accept the resignation of Michael Japina from the Exeter Township School Board. The resignation reads as follows: Please accept this letter as my letter of resignation as a member of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors effective at the conclusion of this evening's March 15 Board Meeting. I am grateful to the community for giving me the opportunity to serve for eight and a half years, and I am thankful for the opportunity to have served with so many committed community members in Board roles, and thank you for your leadership. I wish the best to this wonderful district and its students, employees, and families. I look forward to connecting with the community in other ways. Can I have a second for that motion? A second. A second. Okay. I would like to allow for public comment or Board comment on this issue.
Yeah, I'll speak up and comment. I know I've, I think I met Mike in 2014 when I became more involved in local government. And always, Mike, I feel like always had a level head, somebody that really understood the issues, and he will definitely be missed here in this role, but I do appreciate the time that he served on the School Board, and I wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors.
I'd like to echo that and thank Mike for his early and strong support of my candidacy and, Mike, for your ongoing support here. You were always there to help me out as a, as a new Board Member. PBSA says that the first, the first year is the year of learning. I think the first term is the term of learning, and just wanted to thank you. You were a voice of reason where we needed much. Thank you.
I'd also like to just make a comment, Mike, and we're going to miss you, as you know. And I've been on the Board with you, I think, for about six years, so it's going to be particularly difficult, you leaving, but I, I do want to reflect on some of the things that you have brought to this Board. You were always one of the Board Members who was prepared coming to a meeting and really were thoughtful in terms of your interpretation of your role as a Board Member. I think you asked challenging questions and always kind of were willing to kind of go out on a limb at some times to really kind of, you know, really look at some things very critically and, and take some, you know, and, and be, let's say, undeterred by the kind of responses you might get from the community. But we're looking forward to hearing from you, and I know we will. So, so again, thanks for all your service. We really do appreciate it.
Okay. All in favor for accepting the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes to amend the agenda. Now it is recommended that the Board of School Directors accepts the resignation of Michael Japina effective at the end of March 15, 2022, Exeter Township School Board Voting Meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Mike, I just want to thank you for the eight years of your service on the Board. During my years of working with you on the Board, I've respected the way you handled yourself and your dedication to our community, and I'm going to miss having you on our team. So, as per Board Policy Number 004, the Board will look to fill Mike's vacancy by application and a majority vote by the Board. We will make an announcement on our website and via social media on how interested candidates can submit an application to fulfill the rest of Mike's term, which expires on December 2023. Okay. We will now move to public comment relating to tonight's agenda, in which we will be following Board Policy Number 903 regarding public participation in Board meetings. First commenter, Ted Gardella.
Good evening, Ted Gardella, 218 Pennsylvania Avenue. Many in our community have been begging this Board and Administration to provide a basic level of transparency for months. Requests for the Board to restore the minutes of the Excellence in Equity in Exeter Committee for Public Review and to publish the Google Document of Instructional Resources compiled as part of the work of this Board Committee have been summarily ignored. Requests for a basic data point about high school courses with the highest failure rate have been met with a stunning reply of "we don't collect that data," when it is a common data point for high schools seeking improvement. Now we have even less transparency about the need for a Superintendent search. How is the interim Superintendent found? A recent right-to-know request about the communication among the Board and Administration about the resignation and subsequent paid leave with the former Superintendent was denied. And now the Board will enter into a Superintendent search without vetting the search firms in public. Why weren't the presentations of the search firms done in a public meeting? This community is left to wonder when the campaign promises of transparency will be demonstrated. Secrecy, executive sessions, unanswered emails, and zip lips appear to be a hallmark of this Board. The decision you make tonight about a search firm will be critical. You will either choose to do the same thing that resulted in a Superintendent not even completing one term of a contract because it is less expensive, or you'll completely surprise this community by engaging a national firm that could bring a Superintendent with actual experience to Exeter. Regardless, no Superintendent will be comfortable and successful with a Board determined to intercede when some teacher feels slight. The development of the budget is also not being done in a transparent fashion. Many in the community anticipate another budget featuring unexplainable growth, requiring a tax increase for the community, and continuing to return poor academic achievement for a premium per student price. This community deserves a Board that will rein in spending, cut taxes, and examine every expenditure with an ROI philosophy. Building back the fund balance should also be a priority. Finally, contract negotiations. Several requests have been made to reveal which Board Members are serving on the Contract Negotiations Committee. By assigning Board Members with current spousal relationships in the District of the Finance and Personnel Committees, this Board has not demonstrated that it will act in the best interest of the community. Rather, having these compromised Board Members on these committees shows the community that certain employees come first, a friends and family point of view. With the majority of this Board compromised by present and past relationships, the most logical course of action would be for those compromised Members to recuse themselves from any negotiations and votes and hire an outside law firm that specializes in collective bargaining contracts in education. Only then can the community have confidence that all cost centers in the contract will be reviewed and evaluated, instead of just allowing the velocity of past practice to govern negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardella. Mary Beth Gardella?
Mary Beth Gardella. I don't miss this. Mary Beth Gardella, 218 Pennsylvania Avenue. And I just want to talk about the committee meetings and the committees that you have on the agenda tonight. I looked on the, the website, and I know you have a new one, which is, looks awesome. And the only thing that I'm, I'm missing on the website is the, the dates, the times, and the locations of those committee meetings. And I know in your Board Policy 005, it states that Board Committees authorized to take official action or render advice on district business shall operate in accordance with the provisions of the Sunshine Act. And so I'm just asking, Dr. Herring, that you ask those chairspeople to put the dates, the times, and the locations so the public can attend.
Can, can you specify what committee meetings you're referencing, please?
The Education Committee, the Finance, and the Facilities.
We all, we all meet at the Cal Meeting. We don't have any meetings outside of that.
You meet where?
I'm sorry, Committee of the Whole Meeting. That's where we have our meetings publicly.
Okay. So there's no individual committee meetings to talk about facilities, to talk about finances, to talk about personnel, to talk about the... Anything that they make a recommendation to the Board?
Not to my knowledge.
No, we used to, we used to have separate committee meetings, and then we went to, at the beginning of last year, this, this format of a Committee of the Whole, so all of our committee meetings are held at that first Tuesday at 6 o'clock.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Gardella. Bob Hoffman?
I echo the comments of my dear old friend over there. He will be missed, and he adds sage advice to this distinguished Board. I, I wanted to just get up and say what a wonderful experience I had with my family on Sunday to see Beauty of the Beast. I know I saw several of the Board Members there. It was fantastic. I wish we could have had every seat filled. I know there were some empty seats, but those kids were great. I'm, excuse me for saying kids, but I'm an old man. The other thing, I just want to make a quick suggestion, and that is that if there's some way we could bring this community together with the Township, the Fire Department, the Police Department, you know, we're all in this together. And if we could maybe meet once or twice a year and put our heads together, maybe there's some issue that we could solve together. I'd love to see that, and I hope you would, too. Last thing is, I very much appreciate your consideration for what you're doing for the volunteer fire department. It's so critical to try to get volunteers. It really is. And I can't tell you, I don't fight fires on a school, but I work behind the scenes, behind these very great men. In fact, they're outside training now, and they'll probably be at later to hear what happens. I just want to take the time to thank you for your consideration. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I appreciate that. Next on the agenda, Board Meeting Minutes. There's no objection. We'll adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's School Board Meeting, February 1st, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and February 15th, 2022 Board Voting Meeting. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Dr. Herring. Yes, sorry. Did we skip over the Substitute Superintendents? I apologize. I didn't have anything for this evening, so I'm sorry. Thanks for finding it. She's trying to avoid me saying that, but... Thank you, Beth. Okay. If there are no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve the February 2022 Treasurer's Report Payment Request dated February 16, 2022 to March 15, 2022. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, the Treasurer Report is approved. Next item, School Board Action. For the past two weeks, the Board has been researching and meeting with different Superintendent search firms. I want to thank those in the community that have shared resources for this search, and I thank those on the Board that have done research as well. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves Burke's County Intermediate Unit to assist the Board in conducting the search for a national new Superintendent.
Second.
Thank you. We have a second. Is there any discussion? I'd like to say that after the interviews of the firms and reviewing the research, I'm very comfortable in using BCIU for our search, for assisting us with the search. Knowing that they will customize the search to our needs is important to me. Cost, although is a concern, it is not a driving force to me, but it's appreciated that BCIU does not, does this at no consultation or facilitation service cost, other than the cost of expected fees such as advertising. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, one abstention. It passes. Okay. There is a correction that I need to make that with 7B is not an action item, that the Board has reviewed and made some changes to the provided advertisement by BCIU. It will be prepared to launch as early as Wednesday into Thursday of this week. I didn't want that yet, Joe, but thank you. I appreciate that. Next is the Education Committee, Mr. Fidler.
Besides the two items, enrollment report and field trips within the 60-mile radius, we have a consent agenda for several field trips. Modifying the health and safety plan to remove quarantining and contract tracing, as discussed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. An agreement between the Exeter Township School District and Alexia Stomidi, an independent contractor for Orton-Gillingham tutoring services for a student at the Jackson-Wold Elementary School at a cost of $125 an hour plus mileage. The legal services consultation agreement between Sweet Stevens-Cats and Williams and the Exeter Township School District for the 2022-2023 school year at a cost of $12,500. And a group of nine staff conferences.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second question?
Yes, I have a question. Sorry. So with the, since we're not contact tracing any longer, does that mean that the students in their rooms will, the teachers are allowed to assign them to different seating? Up till now, it's been, you know, assigned seating, and all of that. Are they going to have some more leeway now so that they can change? Yes. Just want to make sure that's conveyed to the, to the teachers as well, okay? If the Board approves, if the Board approves changes to the health and safety plan tonight, all of that will be communicated, communicated the way we usually do, which is to both community and staff so that everybody's on the same page about what's expected. Thanks, Don. You're welcome.
I have two questions for Mrs. Harris. Can you give us a brief description of what Orton-Gillingham Tutoring Services is?
Sure. So you've heard me talk previously about specialized reading methodology. Orton-Gillingham instruction is one of those specialized reading methodologies, and so we use it with our students who have the most challenges with relation to learning how to read, and particularly with our special education students who are identified as having dyslexia or a specific learning disability in reading.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. I'll leave the mic on.
Yeah. I have a question about item number five on the, on the conference's safety care trainer training in Valley Forge. Could you give us a brief description of that?
Sure thing. So I guess I'll start with what safety care training is, right? So, safety care training is a training that's provided through a company called QBS, and it is essentially de-escalation and restraint training for staff so that they know how to handle students who are in crisis, particularly students with special needs. And so there are several different mandates, both federally and at the state level, around having staff trained in de-escalation and restraint procedures. Years ago, there, you would have heard about something called CPI, which was a different model of de-escalation, escalation training. That model was really heavy on the restraint piece and didn't have a whole lot of the proactive de-escalation stuff. So quite a few years ago now, the IUs and PTAN put out safety care training as a more proactive model when dealing with students who need to be de-escalated. And so we have to train staff essentially in all of our low-incidence special ed classrooms. So that would be all of our autistic support, multiple disabilities classrooms, life skills support classrooms, emotional support classrooms, in this method so that they all know how to de-escalate students appropriately. In addition to that, we have administrators who are trained in this model because they also help to de-escalate, and very often, regular education staff. We have some in the District who are trained because they help serve on those building crisis response teams. So, training for safety care is expensive, so it's more cost-effective to have trainers in your district, people who are trained to then continue that training every year. There's also an annual recertification process that every single one of those people that I just described has to do yearly, and I think that's like $200 per person to do that if you have to go somewhere else to have that training. So having, again, having that trainer on site is more cost-effective. We have, this is actually a replacement for someone who had resigned over the summer.
Thank you. I'm also very glad to hear about the changes. When I was a CASA volunteer, one of my kids was at an RTF.
Yeah.
And what they practiced there was pretty much sit on the kid until, until their blood pressure and heart rate went down.
Yeah, that's, that's...
It wasn't much more than that.
That's the great thing about safety care training through QBS is it's highly focused on the de-escalation strategies. It's good.
Thanks, Don.
You're welcome. I had another question. Sorry, just realized I did. So, at the bottom of that, there was an attachment about the after-school tutoring program. Am I allowed to ask now? The attachment line here?
I think, is that under personnel? That's under personnel.
Oh, forgive me.
That's fine. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Personnel Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Good evening. We have a consent agenda today. I'd like to pull out number five of the consent agenda. So we will start with, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number one, resignations. Number two, appointments. Number three, change of status. Number four, leaves of absence. And number six, the attached list of course requests.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number five, staffing for the after-school tutoring program for 2021-2022 for the attached list of employees. Second.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
That's where my question is. I apologize. So I'm looking through this, and why is Reifton in the junior high excluded?
So, Mr. Dr. Flam, do you want to, do you want to take that? And maybe you can add a little bit about what the actual tutoring program is and why we have it here.
Yeah, we targeted the high school, and we targeted third-grade students with the funding that we had. Purpose of the high school program is to identify at-risk students and to provide support for those at-risk students, both academic and organizational skills, and time-related tasks, skills, things like that. Secondary purpose is to engage students with teachers and build relationships and hopefully develop better skills that way as well. So the students are selected based upon their academic performance, identifying students who are failing multiple courses, and through the intervention process. It's about five to one student-to-teaching ratio. And then we identified third-grade students at the elementary level who are, via their STAR scores, kind of just below grade level, and we feel that with some additional support can make it to grade level. And so they're receiving support that way. We're doing pre and post testing via STAR to make sure that they're making the progress that we're, that we're hoping to make.
And are we expecting to extend this? I only ask because, for example, my kids are in Reifton. So that's why I immediately saw that. And I've been told, you know, get a tutor, and this is going to be offered during the summer. We were talking about tutoring with the ESTER grants and things like that. So I want to know, is this something that's going to be rolled out at the other schools or no?
Well, that would, that would be up to the Board. But certainly, we are seeing progress early on, we're seeing benefit early on with the programs that are in place, and so we would propose to extend it based upon that success.
Okay. So during the summer, when they were discussing it, it was not just third and high school. So when did it become third and high school, I guess, would be my question? During the summer, it was, everybody's been through a pandemic, those children who are struggling will have after-school...
Talking about the summer program?
No, I'm not, no. It was during the summer that they, that the Board discussed having the after-school tutoring. And it was also during the same meeting that Dr. Minor also discussed having busing because of the tutoring program. The tutoring program was one of the things it was supposed to help with. So I'm just wondering how, you know, how broad this is going to be because of the...
So I'm just wondering how, you know, how broad this is going to be because if we're going to limit it, that is, you know, can be problematic, may be problematic.
So, Dr. Miller, my understanding was that this was to start as a pilot program, that they were going to identify the, you know, they're identifying children and, and based on that, they're going to begin this tutoring program and then they'll be assessed. And my understanding was that, you know, my assumption would be, Dr. Flamm, that we could probably see a report from you, you know, at whatever time you would see fit, and we can discuss if the program is successful, that we need to push it out to other, other grade levels, or if this is a, you know, this is something that we think is identified for the specific, you know, third grade and high school. Is that fair to say?
Be happy to report.
Okay. Good.
I, my only concern, and I, I completely agree with the, the way it's set up now, but if we're doing, sorry. That's not the way that it's being conducted to the parents at the other grade schools, at the other schools. It's being conducted as we're working to get this in place. Your child might be, might, it might behoove them to take advantage of this. And now I am real, and now I'm finding that it is only for third and 12th grade that it was, like, that this is a rollout. I, I am just confused, I guess. And I believe that a lot of other parents in the community might be as well because they have been waiting to find out when this after-school program is going to start for their children, not just in elementary and senior high. So that's my only concern. I do understand why we started the pilot program. I understand third and the senior high. I, I do understand that. But as I said, in the summer, when it was discussed, it was discussed as every building would probably have an after-school tutoring program so that if your child felt was behind, they would have that option if their, you know, their teacher saw that they were having an issue. And so this, I think that this is something that we need to let the community know, this is a pilot program, et cetera. That's all I'm saying. Okay?
I kind of, I just feel that when we kind of discussed it in, I think it might have been in October, is that when we, when we talked about all those projects, the special projects? Okay. I don't, I don't think we had any details on it yet.
Didn't, you didn't.
So I didn't.
When Dr. Minor did a, she did a little, like, she did a little presentation. She was talking about it mostly. It wasn't, it wasn't anybody here at the table that I remember. It was Dr. Minor. And she said that she was looking, you know, to do this because of, because of COVID, which totally made sense to me. But she specifically said every school. And when I, and like I said, when I've met with teachers just at Reifton and at the junior high, it's been brought up. Maybe they can be tutoring after school. And I say, are they going to offer it like they said they would? And so, like I said, it just needs to be explained that this is now just slowly rolling out.
Mr. Morgan, on another note on this, I just want to get some clarification that 100% of this pilot is covered by ESAR grant funds.
Yep, so that was next on my list here. So the, the funding for the after-school tutoring is from the American Rescue Plan or the ESAR funds. We have an allotted amount of money specific to be used for supporting after-school programs. We currently have $35,000, which needs to be used by June the 30th, 2022. And those, that, those monies would be, would be allocated first for this program.
Thank you.
And then just one other thing, there is a typo in the attachment that you have in your board docs. It says it's for up to 150 hours per teacher. That should say up to 50 hours per teacher.
That's a nasty typo.
Was. Our apologies. So again, we're, we're voting for the, you know, for, for the list of teachers up to 50 hours.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Finance, facilities, and audit, Mr. Mel.
Yes, Dr. Herring. The first item that we have up is the fire, volunteer firefighter tax credit. This was carried over from our committee of the whole meeting. We have two options that were carried to the voting meeting. One option was a 50% tax credit capped at $4,000, which is option one attached, or a $600 credit maximum per qualified, oh, qualified volunteer. Both are under Act 91, and that is option two. Mrs. Montane, would you, your suggestion would be to maybe first vote on option one and then see how that goes and we'll, okay?
Right, make a motion for just option one.
Okay.
If it passes, then you don't, that's it.
Thank you. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a volunteer firefighter tax credit for all volunteer firefighters with option one, a 50% tax credit capped at $4,000.
We have a second. Can we have discussion?
I just wanted to say that in case this doesn't go past option one, my, my preference would be for option two, so I just wanted to get that on the record.
Yeah, yeah, if this, just to add to Mr. Fidler's comments, if option one does not pass, we will then be taking a vote for option two.
Mr. Mel, I would just like to add that I will be abstaining from this vote because Mr. Christopher Jordan is my brother-in-law, and he's the deputy fire chief.
Thank you for disclosing.
Mr. Mel, I'll also be abstaining from this vote as my husband is an inactive volunteer firefighter, so this would benefit me should he become active in the future.
Thank you. Any other abstentions? Mr. Japina, are you joining the fire department after? Just want to make sure. Touche.
I just, I just like to say, you know, we have the two options in front of us. I know that there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about the, you know, the dollar figures, that some, some of the people would be eligible for less money versus more money depending on the assessed value and the tax abatement. You know, one of the things I think is worth pointing out is that this was a presentation that was, that was presented to us from the fire department. I would assume that that had gone through their, you know, vetting process and that they were also aware of, of that as well. So I am in support of this. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we, we should do a roll call vote, everything. And I'm just going to say for this one in particular, I, I am more in favor, kind of echoing what Mr. Fidler said. I'm more in favor of the $600 credit. I, I do personally have an issue with two volunteers that may be essentially doing the same thing. And one happens to live in a mobile home getting $300, and another one lives in a, a larger, you know, four-bedroom home that may get a $4,000 credit. To me, that just, that doesn't seem fair, and I, I feel like the $600 option is the more equitable option to give.
Roll call for option one. Dr. Andrea Battler?
No.
John Fidler?
No.
Dr. Ann Herring?
No.
Dr. David Hemberger?
No.
Michael Japina? Jason Mel?
No.
Timothy Morgan?
Yes.
And Julia Schaefer and Allison Wilson abstain. Two yes, five no. Motion does not pass.
So we'll be moving on to option two, taking a vote for option two, which is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a volunteer firefighter tax credit for all volunteer firefighters in the Exeter Township Fire Department as a $600 credit that's assigned in option two. Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Can I just clarify that that's a maximum of 600? It may not necessarily be 600 depending upon the tax liability for the individual.
That is correct. It, it is, Dr. Hemberger, it is worded to say that it's the, the maximum tax liability or up to $600, whichever is the lesser amount. Based on the 2021 figures and assessments that I looked at, everybody would have an assessment value that would have met a $600 tax liability.
And, sorry, Jason, did, or, Mr. Mel, I apologize. Did we decide where this money is coming from, reminding?
This is coming from our, our own funds, from our general fund.
It's actually a rebate of the taxes paid. It would happen at the end of the year if they met all the criteria. They'd have to pay the taxes at the beginning of the year, and then at the end of the year, we'd rebate the amount if they met the criteria. General fund.
General fund, yep.
So I'd like to say something, just if you don't mind. I just want to say that I believe that a thriving fire department is essential to the safety and well-being of the community. And in the case of a volunteer fire department, many hours and commitments are necessary to make sure that the community is taken care of. Our community has a stellar volunteer fire department. These men and women have been called to serve the interests of others above themselves. I believe that this is a noble calling. Those willing to risk their lives to run toward danger and not away from danger are to be commended as well as supported. I and my family personally support them. This is because I have the financial resources to do so. However, when I ran, I promised to stand for fiscal, fiscal conservancy. Currently, 60% of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck. Inflation is at a 40% high, and senior citizens are having to make serious decisions about what to spend limited money on. Finally, this is not a school matter, a direct school matter, as much as I appreciate everything that the fire department does for our school. So due to these extenuating circumstances, I will be unable to support this measure. Thank you.
Mr. Feike, can you take roll call?
Andrea, Dr. Andrea Battler?
No.
John Fidler?
Yes.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Yes.
Dr. David Hemberger?
Yes.
Michael Japina? Jason Mel?
Yes.
Timothy Morgan?
Yes.
Six yes, one no, two abstentions, motion passes.
Okay, moving on to item B. The Berks County Intermediate Unit Mandated Services Budget. Believe Mr. Feike had said that we need to make a, take a roll call vote on this as well. So this is a 2022-23 BCIU mandated services budget in the amount of $1,943,946, with Exeter's proposed share being $46,563.21.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that this cost to the district has not increased over the past three years as far as I can tell.
And could, could we explain again to the public why we're approving the entire budget, but we're only, we're, we're only responsible for a certain point of that?
Sure, the BCIU is supported in a number of ways, through state funding, through federal funding, through proprietary measures, and also from what they call district membership. So each one of the Berks County districts is a member of BCIU. So as a membership, where we have a board member that sits on their board, and every school district has a board member that sits on their board, we must approve the whole, the whole budget.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
That's a roll call. Sorry, that's okay. I just want.
All right. Dr. Andrea Battler?
Yes.
Michael Japina? Jason Mel?
Yes.
Dr. David Hemberger?
Yes.
John Fidler?
Yes.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Yes.
Allison Wilson? Timothy Morgan?
Yes.
Julia Schaefer?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion pass.
Moving on to item C with the consent agenda, I would like to pull out items one and item seven from the consent agenda. The consent agenda then we will be voting on items two, three, four, five, six, and eight.
Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item C1, this is the FMX software for the maintenance and custodial system for work order tracking, cost analysis, and preventative maintenance costing.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Second.
No discussion?
I just wanted to, to thank, thank, and what was it?
Mr. Biggerstaff was.
Yeah, yeah, Stephen, yeah. Just wanted to thank him for all his work. I know that, you know, we peppered him pretty good with questions. And, you know, he certainly did his due diligence and we did not, he did not go with the, you know, with the most expensive option. He feels like this is the best option and is, is not as expensive. And, and he actually had said to us that he's going to bring us a report back, I think, and, and hope that he can recoup some of this from savings that he'll get through, through the system. So just thanks to him for all his work.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, and lastly, item number seven. This is a sample contract has been attached between the count temps and the Exeter Township School District for a temporary business office employee while the employee is out on leave. Mr. Feike had indicated that the rate of this contract would be between $55 to $60 an hour. I believe the position that we would need to fill the temp for is a $20 hourly rate, is my understanding.
With full benefits.
With, with full benefits, while this temp position would be without benefits.
Correct.
Yep.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Just a, just a question. How, there's not a whole lot of detail on this proposed contract, including rates or even the time parameters, the length of this contract.
I, I can give you a little detail. We have an employee going out on leave. It's a critical position. They file all their taxes, they file W-2s, they process the paychecks and direct deposits. So I need an accountant. Our accountants would have someone, but they're about $120 an hour. And they recommend we go to an agency like Robert Half.
Is there some reason, though, that we don't have a fully executed contract?
I've interviewed three different people. I haven't felt comfortable yet. I have another fourth interview and a fifth interview.
Is it premature to pass a, a motion that, where we don't have this double of detail?
I, I can, we can contingent that it doesn't go above a certain amount if you want. It's, once we find the right person, I want to commit to them. So we have, so we have, the person's going to be going out within two months. And there's some information they have to transfer to the next person because it'll be through the end of the year.
So are we, are we, are we approving this contract? Are we approving the, let's say, the relationship or the?
The agency.
With the agency?
Correct.
You're going to pursue?
There'll be a new, there'll actually be a final contract with the person. Like I said, each person has a different wage.
And ultimately, we'll have a contract that we can see and approve?
Correct.
So there, okay, so there will be an additional voting item?
There'll be additional unamended, you know, but I, before I go further, they sort of need that, yes, we're going to approve a contract with them if they, if someone in front of us, we decide to hire them.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mel?
Yes, sir.
While I agree with what was stated, the, the motion reads that this is a contract between account temps, so I'm not quite sure if we would need to amend this motion or table this until next month, but, um, i- if we have to do another vote to approve the contract, I'd like to see dollar figures or have this motion amended.
Yes, um, so your, your suggestion, Mr. Morgan, is to amend the motion to include the, um, the maximum that would be willing to, uh, pay for, uh, the contract as well as remove the account temps and?
No, my understanding was the way that Mr. Feike explained, Mr. Feike, tell me if I'm wrong, is that he's asking for approval to, to go ahead and start working with this agency, but I don't know that there's a cost associated with that right now. There's no cost, but, uh, they will not commit a person unless they know the board's gonna approve the contract down the road, you know?
Okay.
It's, it's like a catch twenty-two.
Is it the, is it the wording of this motion that maybe?
What, what I'd be coming back is, this is the final contract, this is the cost, so a maximum, I would suggest right now.
So there's no cost right now? And then we will have a new contract when we find the actual person?
Correct. And that person starts to go through clearances?
So we're simply telling you that we're committing up to this amount? And when, and then you will present us with a contract that falls within those parameters?
The name of the person.
Okay. Did you wanna say something, this, this is, okay?
No, I, 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 I think given the position that needs to be filled, that, that, um, if Mr. Feike is saying he needs to work with this agency, all, all you're doing tonight is approving him working with the agency. You're not committing to any funds.
That's fine, yeah. I think we.
And that's why it's a sample, I made sure it was a sample contract, not the final contract.
Yep.
So, so based on the proposed rate, I'm just curious, just 'cause I don't know this level of work. Is this the only agency that we can work with? I mean, it, it seems like, I mean, you're talking about a, a rate that's three hundred percent of what we're, we're paying right now. Well, it's not really three hundred because. I know, there's no. No benefits. No benefits, I understand. I look, I checked with our accountants, they really don't have some, but if they would, they can provide us on a, on a day-to-day basis, but their rate was a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. Uh, there's some other temp agencies that did not have accountants or, or people that were qualified. Account temps have a lot of accounts, people that are qualified, and it's, it's a critical position because they all, besides filing our tax returns, we, we do not use an ADP. We file our own nine forty-one quarterly taxes, we file the federal taxes, we file the W twos, we, we transfer the payroll, we do everything in-house. And it is a, uh, critical position. And it, it would be, it would be required for full-time in the interim? We couldn't get away with a part-time position? It's a full-time position now. Okay. With, uh, upwards of seven hundred people at pay, it's, it's different, especially with coaches and, you know, bus drivers. Half the time just collecting their pay down and, you know, after processing, processing the, uh, reports and filing the returns.
Mr. Feike, do we know how long this is going to be for?
Uh, we're talking June through January.
Oh.
And that's why I said W two, year-end filing the federal's, you know, it, it's very important that this is done right.
So. But we're, but we're not replacing this employee?
No, because they're going out on a leave.
Okay. I just wasn't sure how long their leave was. Sorry, I was thinking like twelve weeks or, but, okay, it was January, gotcha.
Doctor here, could I offer some amended language as a possible option? Um, to authorize, um, the, uh, business office to pursue a contract uh, between account temps, et cetera. Um, that would be this, the, the, you know, the, the change that I think would make this acceptable from my perspective.
Mr. Mel?
I, I agree. Don't have to, don't have to twist me over.
This, Schaefer, you second it, so you have to agree too.
I agree.
So, just to be clear, the, the seven, the vote for seven, C seven would be to authorize the business office to pursue a contract between account temps and the district, period.
For not to exceed a rate of sixty dollars an hour, I think was what we wanted to add in there as well.
I thought that we were gonna take a second vote for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so the rate, the rate is.
The final contract will have the rate.
Okay.
Right.
Gotcha, thank you.
So we weren't exactly right on Robert's rules, but why don't we get a second for this reworded motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Doctor Herring, that is it for, uh, my committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Policy Committee, Dr. Hemberger?
Thanks, Doctor Herring. Um, it's recommended that the Board of, uh, School Directors, uh, approve policy. This is a new policy, uh, two thirty-six point one, Threat Assessment for First Reading.
Second. We have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries? Thank you, Dr. Hemberger. Mrs. Wilson, can you cover athletics and extracurricular activities as well as ECEF?
I can. All right, we have some exciting news as our winter sports, um, are wrapping up. Um, in wrestling, we had our first girls wrestling season, which was, um, covered recently in the news. But we, um, also had Molly Lubinow place sixth in the PIAA State Tournament, um, this year. So great congratulations to her. And then we had Johnny Miller, um, who was our, a District Three champion and also fourth in the PIAA Tournament. In bowling, the bowling team won the District Three Championship. And they will be attending the state tournament this Saturday at Dutch Lanes in Lancaster. And as an individual bowler, Ethan Reimer won the District, District Three Bowling Championship. Um, this weekend in swimming, we have nine students headed to the PIAA Championship Meet at Bucknell. And, um, in boys' basketball, for the first time since nineteen ninety-nine, um, the boys' basketball team participated in the state, um, PIAA Tournament. Um, our high school spring sports have started practicing and they're off, and, um, junior high will be following, I believe, next week. Um, also, I just wanted to, um, to mention, I did also attend the musical Beauty and the Beast, and it was wonderful. And I'm also excited to report that we have many spring concerts to look forward to from our music department coming up. Um, and hopefully in April we'll have those dates listed. Um, ECEF. Um, ECEF's Fourteenth Annual Golf Tournament is scheduled for Friday, August fifth. The planning committee is in full swing to make the tournament another success. We're looking forward to a fun afternoon in support of ECEF and the students of Exeter Township School District. Our goal is to top last year's net of thirty-three thousand dollars. For information about the event, follow our posts on Facebook or Instagram. Also, mark your calendars for Friday, May twentieth, four to eight P M. ECEF is piggybacking on the school district's mini-thon event and hosting a food truck festival in the back parking lot outside of Don Thomas Stadium. To date, they have dozen food truck vendors and activities planned. And stay tuned for more information as we plan for a fun community event and to cheer on the mini-thoners. Finally, ECEF is in the midst of working on a handful of grant applications for a few projects in and around the district. We'll report back with our success of the grant applications next month.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. BCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Fidler?
Just a footnote, uh, to your announcement about the Governor Mifflin student. He was a student at BCTC. That's how I first became aware of the, uh, of the incident that occurred in the city. And, uh, you've all received the J O C briefs, I have nothing beyond that.
Thank you. Dr. Hemberger, can you cover BCIU Board of Directors as well as the, uh, Legislative Liaison?
Yes. Uh, the Berks County Intermediate Unit, um, it held its monthly meeting, uh, this past February seventeenth. At that meeting, in addition to the regular business that they, they talk about, um, was an announcement of a couple of different events that are coming up. One is the Annie Sullivan, uh, Award Ceremony. Now, this is a, an annual, uh, uh, award process where, uh, school districts identify, uh, s- special education staff who perform in an extraordinary manner in support of special needs students. I don't know if we ever have had an Annie Sullivan Award winner here in our district, but I, I, I think we should really start to cultivate that and try to start to get some applications, and I know that's, I'm sorry. Oh, we have multiple. I just don't recall any in the past several, several years. Well, that's great, that's great. I mean, just in my tenure on the board, at BCIU Board, I haven't seen anyone from Exeter, so thank you for that. Um, so that, that ceremony's coming up on April sixth, and then BCIU has their fiftieth, um, uh, anniversary event on April twenty-first. They have been an entity since, I think, nineteen seventy-one, seventy-two. So it's pretty, it's pretty impressive. Uh, the IU has been servicing school districts in the county for fifty years. And, uh, they are, uh, just an amazing organization. Um, so, uh, they, and I think one of the best IUs in the state, and I'm, I don't think I'm being biased there. That's commonly recognized as really an exceptional organization, I know. Doctor Cindy, you, you worked at BCIU and you can, you can verify the quality of the programs there.
I did, and, and thank you for your support of BCIU. Uh, I was very proud to work there for eleven years and, uh, we were told we were the best, but, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna be the one to say it, but.
I actually got my start, uh, at BCIU, um, back in nineteen eighty, I think it was. Um, so that's, oh, the next, uh, business meeting for BCIU is this Thursday, March seventeenth. Uh, in terms of legislative report, um, I, I do wanna mention that we did have a COLA meeting. COLA is, uh, short for, uh, Committee on Legislative Action. Uh, these are quarterly meetings, uh, virtually any school board member can attend. Many times, uh, superintendents, uh, school business officials, uh, other administrative staff are in attendance. Uh, these are sometimes in person. This was recently was online and has been online for the past year or so. Um, but this year it featured PASBO, Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials. And it was all about a, a report on a, a, a school district budget survey and the impact of COVID. Um, and the, the kind of problems that districts have had, uh, with, uh, financial operations, economic issues facing schools uh, created by the pandemic, things like supply chain issues, labor shortages. Um, you know, some of the mandated costs that we're always talking about, the, you know, the, the district mandate, or the state mandates on districts. They also talked a lot about the charter schools tuition growth and how, and the impact on school districts and how burdensome that, that is and has become. And the need for, uh, uh, reform of, uh, funding for charter schools. Um, and they, and they did an analysis of the governor's, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three budget as well as the federal infrastructure bill. Um, and I did send those, those documents to the board, so you may recall some of those, some of that information. Uh, lastly, something that Mr. Fidler brought to our attention, uh, yesterday in an email, but, uh, it was about the, uh, the, the, the trial challenging public education, uh, uh, funding for Pennsylvania schools. And this involves, uh, six school districts, four parents, um, an association of rural and small schools, and, uh, the Pennsylvania chapter of the NAACP. They all filed a joint lawsuit, uh, in Commonwealth Court against the Pennsylvania legislative leaders, the education officials, the governor, um, and basically charging that, uh, the state's, um, uh, method of school funding, that system is unfair. And that it violates the Education Clause of the Pennsylvania Constitution. Um, this trial's been going on since November. Um, it's generated, uh, forty-eight days of testimony, uh, it has fourteen thousand pages of, uh, testimony, uh, but it's still not near completion. Um, so legal briefs still need to be filed and will be monitored closely. Um, one thing that they, um, the plaintiffs concluded was that the, uh, the Pennsylvanians acknowledged they have one of the most unequal school funding systems in the nation. And it relies heavily on local property taxes, which skew resources for schools in favor of wealthy and white school districts. Um, so, um, Pennsylvania's system of school funding is, is, uh, really a, a, a system of, of haves and have-nots. So we will be, you know, following that carefully and hopefully, uh, there'll be some, um, results that are favorable to school districts in terms of funding. We do know that Pennsylvania is, has one of the worst funding records for public education, I think, in terms of the state contribution. I think Pennsylvania ranks forty-fifth out of fifty school districts in terms of the amount of support that the, that the state legislator, legislature provides, public education, making it, again, really difficult because the burden then falls on the local tax base and the local taxpayers. Uh, so another, another reason why this case is important to us and another reason for us to do whatever we can to continue to a- advocate for, uh, improvements to, uh, appropriate funding for public education. So that's all for my report. Thanks, Doctor Herring.
Thank you, Dr. Hemberger. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Mel?
Doctor Herring, the only thing I, uh, have to report is that the Board of Supervisors, uh, for Exeter Township uh, did vote and approve to put the promenade, uh, property up for sale, uh, along Perkium and Avenue. Uh, it's something we'll definitely wanna keep a close eye on, um, in terms of, uh, purchasing and how that affects tax rolls. And, uh, just, uh, essentially what, what is gonna be moving in there as well. That's the only thing I have for my report.
Thank you. Next for public comments, would anyone in the public like to be heard? I have no one listed here, but if anyone would like to step up. Mr. Jordan?
Uh, Chris Jordan, Deputy Fire Chief, Exeter Township, along to your fire department. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank the board, uh, for your support on approving the tax credit program this evening. You know, I'm glad that the board recognizes that this is an important program, that the state's supported. And, you know, we feel it's an important step in the right direction. Uh, with that said, uh, Mr. Mel knows, uh, how important we feel it is to continue progressing this program. Um, so what I would like to ask is, number one, um, should I continue to work with Mr. Mel on the results of the program and how we're gonna, uh, implement the program and things of that nature, or should I go through somebody else? Uh, that's my first question. I know it's public comment, but.
And now goes the business office myself.
Yeah.
I'll give you my card.
Okay. Brian, you'll work, you'll, you'll, you'll continue working with Mr. Jordan then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and as far as, um, you know, implementing the program, we'll need to know about the timing. I know your timing is different than the township's timing. Um, I'd like to share with you the required documents that the township uses so that we can kinda implement something similar. And, and I'd also like to, you know, continue the dialogue with at least one of the board members. If Mr. Mel is gonna continue to be in charge of the financial team. Um, you know, just to see the impact of the program, um, the cost of the program the first year and potentially looking at furthering the program i- in future years. Cause as I expressed to Mr. Mel, we know that this program needs to be impactful, um, it's important, and, um, like I said, the, this was a step in the right direction, but now we need to go to the next level. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna continue to work with him to try to get there and keep monitoring the results of what we implemented tonight. My last question is, are we okay, um, to start advertising the program that it's in place and things of that nature?
The resolution passed.
The resolution passed, so.
Yep.
Okay.
You may wanna wait and have a conversation with the business office and make sure everybody's saying the same thing.
Okay. No problem. Thank you again.
Mr. Jordan, question, could you, uh, keep us apprised of how your volunteer force grows and if, if the growth is attributed to this program?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, that's, we, we want the program to be successful. Um, you know, hopefully I have good news to report, um, but I'll, I'll continue to talk with Mr. Mel and, you know, provide data and information. And, you know, I'm close by so I can come, keep coming and meeting with me.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Scardella, did you wanna speak?
Yeah, I, I wanna go back on, you know, my original question. Um, 'cause I'm, I'm looking at the, you know, when we, we, over, this is why I asked for, you know, when the meetings are. Because in, in the committee of the whole, there was no discussion on the personnel. And, and there certainly was no discussion on the after-school tutoring program. So I know that you have the committee of the whole where you have these discussions and then you move them forward for voting. Is that correct? I don't recall at the committee of the whole that, that this was discussed or, or moved forward. So I, I mean, are we out, out of order here? I mean, the, the agenda wasn't even, um, amended.
Right, so since, I'm, I'm new, um, but since, I can say that for a little while. Um, the, the personnel, I, there was a personnel item, that's right. It was under personnel. So it's a personnel item. So since the personnel items are pers- personnel, most of them would be, it, done in executive session anyway. Am I right with that, Sharon, that that would?
Yes, that's correct. But something like this should have been discussed out in the public.
The personnel. Or the after-school tutoring program. I mean, if it was a personnel item and it would, it would have been discussed in an executive session. So if that's how it was captured.
I, I'd just like to say some, some items that we find that, that make their way to the board agenda aren't discussed in per, in, in committee and they're recommended by the administration. Um, this may have been one of those items where, um, you know, we had some general con- discussions about it previously. I think people mentioned September and October and, and this, and the administration moved forward with it and then made recommendations. But not everything, to my understanding, always goes through a committee, uh, or through the committee of the whole.
Well, then there were some discussions, though. I mean, even though if it, something like this should be brought forward to the public, too.
Yeah, I guess my point is that there, there was some conversation about the program.
Back in October.
Back in September and October.
There was. There was, there was discussion back in, when I met, what I was mentioning earlier was that there was discussion. It was, say it was September, I could go back and find it in my notes, but say it was September. They voted on it to have, to implement this. And then they implemented it and they finally found teachers. Now we are voting to pay these teacher, like these people to do it. Is that not how it works?
So from back in October, you can move it forward to, to today to, I, I just not, I'm just not understanding the process, that's all, that's all.
So it was approved, but we're just approving the people today?
Correct.
But the program was approved and discussed publicly?
Yes.
At that time? But thank you. No, I appreciate you asking for clarification.
Right.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gardella, your point is taken and, um, I, a- a- as the Chair of Personnel, I will personally make sure that we discuss with the administration if there are things prior to the Cal meeting that I feel as though need to be brought up for public discussion and we'll make sure that they get.
Yeah, I, I understand employees and all that other stuff.
Understood. Your point's taken, absolutely. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Morgan, can I just say too, I mean, I, I think every other committee runs its, jet, tries to run its agenda through committee of the whole. Uh, and I've, I've seen that, you know, personnel has not been doing that. I'm not sure why because some of the items certainly, to me, are not of the type that require an executive session. They're simply just accepting people for, you know, retirement, uh, taking on new employees and that sort of thing. It just provides a discussion forum. So I, I'm wondering whether we can, we, we can resurrect the process of, you know, what we had previously, which was, you know, putting personnel items on the committee of the whole as well, so we have opportunities. We don't, I mean, we, we're sure to be transparent, you know, and making sure everyone's aware of what's gonna be on the agenda. Um, just a consideration.
I, I don't disagree with you, Dr. Hamburger. Uh, just a word of caution that if you make it a committee of the whole agenda item and it, you are talking about employees, uh, sometimes sort of random discussions come up about individual employees and all of a sudden you're talking about things you shouldn't be in public.
So this is my take.
Yeah, I mean, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any more information discussed than there was tonight, you know, which, you know, really is just recognizing recommendations from the administration.
And I, I think, I think in this point and, and, um, and to, to Ms. Gardella's comment, you know, we could, you know, in the future, when we see things like this, we can have this as a topic of discussion without the employees listed that we're going to be approving, just simply what the program is and that we're going to be selecting, uh, teachers and that, or, or whoever the employees are that are gonna be selected and that, that we can, you know, bring that up again at the voting meeting with the actual.
That would be entirely appropriate.
Thank you.
Can I just add a couple of other cautions? I think it's a great idea, actually, to, to have the, that there. We do have to watch where the conversations go. And two, um, be aware that, that we have two weeks between committee of the whole and voting meeting and a lot of personnel things happen in between there, so there will be amendments when it comes time for the voting meeting, too.
Okay. Move right on. Um, right now I'd like to open the floor to the board, but if I may start. Um, I wanted to, Joe, if you can put that up now, please. Thank you. I wanted to share, um, with the community a few things. The first is the timeline for the superintendent's search, which should go as follows. The superintendent position will post from Thursday, March seventeenth till Monday, April twenty-fifth. The school community survey will post from Thursday, March seventeenth till Friday, April first. Tuesday, May third, we'll have a review of applications with the board members. Monday, May ninth, and Tuesday, May tenth, we'll have initial interviews. And Wednesday, May eighteenth, we'll have our second round of interviews. And I would like to call that a soft, um, timeline. We're still in the process of working on that. Um, we are still working on the logistics such as community participation. Lastly, I also want to share with the community that the board has begun the process of negotiations with the teachers' union, food service, and Act ninety-three. Mr. Hamburger, Mr. Morgan, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there anyone else that would like to speak from the board?
Doctor Herring, uh, I just wanted to make a couple of thank yous real quick. Um, you know, I, I wanna take time, of course, to thank our, our teachers and our staff for everything they're doing every day. But, you know, given the, you know, the tragic news that we've heard in the county today, you know, every month we come to these meetings and Mrs. Wilson shares all the great things happening in sports and in clubs and art exhibits and theater and music. And, uh, I just wanna also extend a special thank you to, to the people that are running those, those clubs and those sporting programs and, and those theaters and, and, um, and music. And it, you know, it takes a lot of effort for, uh, for those leaders and mentors to do that. It means a lot to our students. And, um, you know, it helps keep them off the street and, and, uh, I think that it's a great service and you can see by the success we have. So just an extra thank you to the people that are, that are helping to run those programs.
I just, um, uh, Mr. Mel just mentioned, um, art and it's Art Month at the library, so, um, you can also.
That was Mr. Morgan.
Um, at the Exeter Community Library, yes. Um, also, I just wanted to say, um, that Mr. Tapino was one of the first board members that called and welcomed me to the board three years ago, so I wanted to be one of the last to say thank you and good luck.
Anyone else?
Uh, Doctor Herring, yeah, I just wanted to, um, just mention the fact that the committee of the whole, we had a, a presentation by Kondell, uh, on solar, um, installation at, uh, behind the Awatton School. And I, and I just wanna say how, first of all, so impressed I was with the presentation, but second of all, how hopeful I am that we can begin to maybe move forward on our recommendation like that. From what I understood, you know, this, there's no direct or upfront cost to the school district primarily, um, although there are some maintenance, you know, costs associated with it. But to me, it's the right direction. It's the right direction for the district. And I, I think in many respects, it's the right direction for this country to really do all we can to try to promote, uh, alternative energy, uh, in, in, and any way we possibly can and to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels and, and those, uh, things that contribute to, you know, climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. So just, I'm very, I, I just wanna say I'm very supportive of it personally. I hope other board members, uh, are, are interested as well. And I'd like to see us continue to try to move forward with that initiative in any way we can or at least have more conversations about it and see just how feasible it could, it could be. Sometimes these presentations, they, they're, you know, they, they're here and then they, that's all we, that's all we see. And so, you know, I'm hoping we can continue to have some action.
And it's actually bring them back at the April fifth committee of the whole. So that's gonna be a long meeting for the budget audit, but. It's good, that's a long process, but you have to start looking at contracts and things like that, you know, alternatives.
Yeah, I, I know it's a big commitment for the district in many respects, but I, I think sixty-eight percent savings in our, in our energy costs would, you know, we're converting that to solar energy would be really phenomenal, so.
We're, yeah, we're, we're cutting him off.
Alright, um, there will be an executive session following this meeting to discuss a personnel matter. At our next meeting, uh, our next meeting will be our community of a hall meeting on Tuesday, April fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Hearing no objections, we will adjourn. Thank you.